Good afternoon. I'm here to be part of the Planning Commission meeting for the city of Columbia on June 8th. The Planning Commission members staff and yes, multiple staff members are here today to ensure that the meeting is and can see if members of the public are able to participate in the meeting at the appropriate times.
If you're here today and would like to speak about a case, please provide your name clearly into the microphone, and please be sure to sign in either at the back of the room or at the podium for documentation purposes. If you're here today to speak about a case, you must speak up when the chairperson calls for public comment. Mr. Cozy? Mr. Cook? Ms. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Harrow?
Here.
Ms. Thomas?
Here.
Mr. Tucker? And Mr. Frost?
Here.
I'll give a brief review of the meeting format and how the applicants will vote before the Planning Commission. Any presentation time ten minutes. This time should include a report to review the project case, the project case history, and any part of the meetings held regarding the request. This time also includes our person presenting information on behalf of the applicants such as attorneys, engineers, and tenants. This time it will not include any questions asked by the Planning Commission staff. What's the reason the public comment period members of the general public are given the opportunity to address their concerns and any two minutes after the public comment period applicants have five minutes to respond. Once the Planning Commission begins the operation, no additional comments will be permitted by the applicant or the public. The administrator does have the time to make a presentation aware of their time and has inspired. The Planning Commission is entitled to admit these procedures on a case-by-case basis. Are there any changes to the agenda?
There are not any changes since publication.
Sure. The Planning Commission, you know, the consent agenda to approve the contribution routine and by saving the motion. Examples such items including free site plans, annexations, and street names. If a member of the Planning Commission or the general public is to discuss a matter of the consent agenda, you must speak up after the consent agenda. There are the items that are from the consent agenda, considering the planning commission and the remaining consent agenda.
And then read through the consent agenda. The first item is to approve the mail-in 2023 meeting minutes. Case, the first case is an interim future land use amendment and an area zoning amendment for pending annexation. Case annex dash twenty twenty-three dash zero zero two one eighteen, one eighteen and a half, twenty-six, one thirty-two, thirty-eight, four hundred. Request recommendation for the assignment of interim land use classification of apartment four mixed residential type three and the assignment of interim zoning of residential two-family in Richland District. A portion within the floodplain district for pending annexation. The property is currently classified as mixed residential high density and residential multi-family medium density and residential multi-family high density in Richland County. The next case, case three, is in the future land use map amendment and zoning map amendment for pending annexation. Annex dash twenty twenty-three dash zero 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 eight, ten point oh one acres on the side of Richard Street. Request recommendation for the assignment of land use classification of transitional sensitive plans and the assignment of zoning of planned development district portions within the floodplain and floodway district and the floodway and floodway district for pending annexation. The property is currently classified as economic due to the center form and is owned by Richland County. Under major site plan review, we have case four S plan dash twenty twenty-three dash zero 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 seven, one point four acres on the area of the money Ranch Drive. Request major site plan approval for the construction of a childcare center, the Big Blue Academy. The property is of PD plant development and creek farms. Under major subdivision preliminary plot review, case five S plan dash twenty twenty-two dash zero 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 five, two point six two acres of Alice Road and Green Road. Request preliminary plot approval for the construction of a single-family residential subdivision, the moonlight. The property is currently zone R two. And under zoning method, case six ZMA dash twenty twenty-three dash zero 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 eight, three point eight five acres on the south side of Trinity Drive. Request recommendation to rezone the property from office of institutional district to residential mixed district R one. And I can place the consent agenda.
Thank you. Is there anyone from Planning Commission or the public? No, we're to see if there are from the consent agenda. That may be a problem. And I'm trying to get some of the children. Hearing consent motion.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Got a motion to approve the consent agenda. Can I get a second?
Second.
Got a motion for a second. I have a second five. Maybe a five. Planning Commission, move into regular agenda. We will use the following. At least to the regular agenda, the administrator will introduce the case. The applicant has ten minutes to make a presentation. Planning Commission may ask questions. Public comment period. As present, the public comment period closed. The applicant has five minutes to respond to the public comments. Will Planning Commission may ask additional questions of the applicant. Operation and action of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission begins the operations. The commission comments will be permitted by the applicant.
Okay, the first case on the regular agenda is a feature of land use map amendment and zoning map for pending annexation. It's case seven, annex dash twenty twenty-three dash zero 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 nine, six point oh four acres on the south side of Trinity Drive and three point six acres on the south side of Trinity Drive. Request recommendation for the assignment of land use classification of urban ag edge mixed residential and the assignment of zoning of residential mixed district for pending annexation. The property is currently classified as neighborhood medium density and is owned by Richland County. And you can see the property is now a question, which are now in a donut, as you can see. I think they got. Okay, so they'll come and make a presentation.
Okay.
Good afternoon. My name is Travis Bassnet with Jose Gable. I'm here representing the developer for this annexation. The previous, the adjacent parcel, the three parcel was just approved to be resoned to. On the consent agenda, this is part of the same townhome development that's being proposed via by zoning that the adjacent area is zoned, posting that this be annexed as the same R one for that development. We've had a pre-cap approved through the city of Columbia for super service. We've had a veteran test that shows sufficient water service through the city of Columbia as well. We also met with the Capitol View Neighbor Association, which is the adjacent neighbor association in this area on May fifteenth, and addressed some of their concerns as well. The usage around and adjacent to this area support the R one zoning use. There is the family use to the northwest, the family use to the southeast. There is a partial lose to the south and a vacant area to the north. Are there any questions we have to answer those?
Okay.
Thank you.
For the applicant staff, we're going to bring this case. Hearing. Is there anybody from the public to speak for against this particular case? Here, speak for against this case. Hearing, saying, who made the case up? Accepting motion.
Mr. Chairman, annex two zero two three zero zero five zero zero nine.
Got a motion to approve. Can I get a second? Got a motion for a second. I have a second five. Any five?
That's going to break us tonight on the day, which is S plan twenty twenty-three zero 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 five and thirty-eight hundred. This case was for the Planning Commission in April and for Cincinnati, the candidates realized their plans to reduce the amount of units. For the content of the decision, the single family residence and construction of thirty-one townhomes. Eight acres at the drop and super street. Townhomes when we configured in three units, three of them, three units, three of them, five units, two units. Each townhome would take two bedrooms and one street parking space of sixty-two, where the applicant's working on sixty-four. There are two parking spaces to accommodate visitors. In accordance with section seventeen dash two five, application specific new procedures and decision standards. Site plan for unified development units as site shall be approved only upon finding that the applicant demonstrates all the following standards have been met. Those are the proposed use, uses of the zoning district that are listed according to the fourth use resident regulations. The development and uses in the site plan comply with the four use regulations. The development proposed in the site plan and its general layout in design apply all available standards and following development standards. The development proposed in the site plan and its general layout in design apply all available standards. Six, the development proposed in the site plan is consistent with all other available standards of its own events and current premises. And staff would recommend that if the Planning Commission is inclined to grant this request, that they make the finding that all those requirements have been met. The applicant is pledging and can explain their case further.
Okay, thank you. Before we have a couple of questions from the Planning Commission staff. All right, give us a. Give a short presentation.
This will be short, sweet. Thank you all so much for having us again. Four in April, heard the concerns, came back and took the site plan again, so reduced units from thirty-four to thirty-one. And what the total parking spaces were reduced, but now we have two additional guest parking spaces, which is two. Is required. So able to get the townhouse, super street to face the street. So those were the major concerns that we heard, we tried to address. And it's not bad for me, so we'd be glad to answer any questions.
Questions after the Planning Commission's agenda. Thank you. All right, and if any folks in the public do speak for against this project, please, please come. Time here for a two-minute time, so if you keep your comms, we're as possible.
Sure, appreciate it. Can you hear me all right?
Sir?
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Good. Members of the council, I came here in April to voice my opposition to this.
Please just make your name.
Yes, my name is Patrick O'Leary. I have been at six oh seven here West Street. I've lived for twenty-two years. Let's just down. Drive. I think I'm a little too close to the thing. Okay, I came here in April to voice my position on this high-density project because of its negative impact on our super infrastructure. I have not changed my mind in this regard, so I'm back to tell you again that I think it is a mistake to. Ready. Infrastructure. The, so, the infrastructure in this area is failing, is my expectancy. And thanks to all the other high-density, it's been bad. It has a way, it's capacity. As a result, we have constant problems. Anyone who lives in the neighborhood, tell you. The crews are up to dig up the street and put a patch on our super, making some. I'm making one. I think that adding thirty-one townhomes with people that are going to be in. It's just going to push the system. Yeah. Major, right? I think looking at it, you're putting out a major disaster. Just last, they says, wait, get from this part of the neighborhood. There was a major, made a break, which caused distress in the neighborhood. Just a fool. And crews came in and took a point of, figure out where the break was, dig it up and fix it. Now we have another patch in our street. So if they make to make a major upgrade to the infrastructure so that he can put his project in. For like, sure, then I can't see any way to really give my approval to this. I have my property there and I have vested interest. And I see these repairs are just very white. People drive down the street, bopity, 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 steel plates, and they run as they fly. So I want to preserve the neighborhood. Is that my turn? Oh, they got it, okay, well, thank you.
Good afternoon. Thirty-eight fifteen, which is almost right next to.
One thing Mr. Martin mentioned, I addressed somebody here last time before, is that city council mentioned, go back and come with your neighbors, that has not happened. Last time, I think, and this commission members, from this commission, it was mentioned that it looks like you just tried to jam as many units out of this piece of property as possible. Certainly does. Going down from thirty-four to thirty-one in a way, the city council is, you know, it's not. Respectfully, it's not a common advice. Now, our concerns that the gentleman brought up are certainly absolutely true. We have had major problems already without this. I'd bring up, too, there's a lot of concern lurking on the road and super. And this project goes through. Again, the pastor of Baptist Church is vehemently against that. It will change the character of the neighborhood at the gateway. And I certainly hope the pastors of the opposition carry significant weight with this commission and with city councils. Also, to talk, you know, it's time to traffic concerns going up and down anywhere. Super meets overboard and goes in the queue in the extra traffic and the terms that will be made of. Kills, I'll kill another one. It's already a dangerous situation, it'll be much worse. See, I'm out of time, I appreciate you listening.
Good afternoon, my name's Wendy. Thirteen fifteen, I'm at Skid Street, not only am I a resident in the neighborhood, I'm also a resident of the neighborhood as council. We do have updated site plan, thanks to the agenda, we have not had contact with Mr. Bowers since our last meeting. I do, we know a couple of things in his packet, in his demolition of two points, not one for this project. The last four units, it was mentioned to space them out, was that on the street. I did hear mention of that. The visitor spaces, those two, two parking spaces are pretty much useless with the concrete pad of the dumpster. So those two visitor spaces are not really viable. We actually had a significant dialogue last Thursday at a meeting with a representative from the DOT, Richland County. We're bringing out some trace here from Richland County County Council. Because when you put aside this side of the development, it will have a concrete curb while the right side will have an asphalt valley garden. So my question was, what zoning of city and county from either on the street? Because the road is not going to be a first-street parking on either overboard or super. Or county or city and don't know that. And they really didn't know what to do because you can't get an emergency vehicle there with vehicles parked. If you put no careful development aside, it means everybody on the home side of the same family. Will barely be able to park in front of the driveway or get out in their own driveway, which is something I face on my own. Because we don't have concrete curbs, so there's no restriction of five feet on either side of your driveway. So try to back out, plus I park directly behind your driveway. And also, I thought about to help me accomplice and info guidelines, this doesn't know that. It is not preserving the character. Why was I dealing with the fact that we do need housing, but we don't decimate our communities for it? To be told, he's going to build something nicer than what's in our community. Your high plank siding is not nicer than my brick and my restored wood floor, not your vinyl plank floor. I would account, that's not part of the work. Don't tell the neighborhood you're going to build something nicer while trying to get us. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Valerie James and I'm over at Brook, I've been there since nineteen eighty-six. I wrote an email, I don't know if you read it, but it contained a lot that I'm going to be able to say right now. I do appreciate it. Mr. Bowers dropped the number from thirty-four to thirty-one, but we actually started out with about thirty-one or thirty. So if you go back and forth, I think thirty-one is still too much. Now, I don't see that many people from the neighborhood here to protest. The preacher had a home attack, so he's not here. And a couple of the members that actually have homes on this street, mixed in with the five apartment complexes. They're elderly or they're in pair, they can't come. So I am sort of spokesman for all the neighbors because I'm on the dog and talk to everybody all the time. We are vehemently opposed to the number. We pretty much accepted that this project's going to happen, but the number is too much for that. But and Overbrook, if you drive down, it has a lot of overgrown trees. My yard in particular has trees that are over a hundred years old. And I would just hate to see the canopy in that particular street destroyed. Real quick, that South Carolina DOT came out and had to literally scrape sediment from the top of the hill where this project would be, that made it all the way down to the bottom. And they had workers, inmates and stuff clearing all that out. That street has a hill and the water comes down, it goes into a creek that feeds into Gil's Creek. Nobody has come and fixed the creek and its drainage, so that's been a problem with me. Thank you so much for listening.
Hi, my name is David Marino, fucking to South Crossback Street, probably three, four weeks away from this development. I mean, you're a position of it. Just in one, somebody would burn a sample of four main bricks within two quarters of the year. Each of those took in excess of four weeks to repair. And this development is helping me to exacerbate that problem. Many of the other concerns here, so for those reasons, I'm going to opposition this. Thanks, sir. We got to answer any questions. We got. Pretty close to the staff, they're reading one, but they're working on a problem. So understand the concerns, we have to. They're to hear those, to address them, the majority of them. Understand that, not in satisfaction, so we have been in talking with the Neighborhood Association for, for every year now. And in this moment, understand the concerns, they're hard to address. We've answered any questions, thank you. Thank you. Yes, we got. I think I have last time, there's a central dated May, I think nineteenth. And then there's a sent dated February. Back in February, we have dated. Some reason it's been May twenty. You can see it. Being those, the nineteenth sounded like, certainly, maybe, the February.
Question here, I mean, is this, yeah, we do traffic study.
We did, we did, the traffic engineer said that. Then we also ran a D N T as well, and they had the sections.
And for parking standard, can we mention more detail about parking?
Yes, ma'am, so, so the, the number of spaces is two, two for, two for, seventy-sixty-two. We, we didn't include two, the reason why we didn't go beyond, is to try to balance the green space with the parking. So there's a, there's a give and take there. Understand the concerns about, about the guest parking. I think you've got to counterbalance that with, with the green space requirements and the others. So we make it a parking, that we, that we need to, to, to service those.
Good, and that last question, several people mentioned more issues in that area. Cheerfully, in, in regards to the current rate issues, adding thirty-one.
Yes, ma'am, so we've, we've got a capacity test and passed the capacity test. You know, that adds to the current issues. That's, that's unfortunately not my property. That would be the city, that would be more with the committee, the utilities department. I actually think it's kind of, for two reasons. Is the capacity is only there to bring in additional tax dollars to the area to help, maybe against some of the concerns. And then secondly, the infrastructure of the super city of Columbia is, is too, too many, to actually have a city. And it's much more pervasive. And it's much more pervasive than just a piece of, unfortunately, that is still not the case. That's a, that's a much greater issue. And frankly, we can't, we can't fix, because it's, it's not a good way to do that. Yeah, ma'am, it's going to be a question, starting with parking and these parking and utilities, I mentioned two, utilities responding for the, for the year. We have a voice to work, it's certain, it's going to be studied for a while. And so the city engineers, I think, make a determination if it, if it stands for five floors. That's correct, yes. Okay. All right, any other questions for the, for the operations? Thank you. Mr. Chairman, come, come, there now, you have some.
Yeah, we just wanted to go ahead, we did receive two letters that were mentioned during the discussion, we just want to make sure that we put it in order. So Exhibit A would be opposition from this Valerie C. James. And then another email, it would be Exhibit B, and that is for.
Yeah, I have a chance to reverse. Question for staff. Yep. For thirty-five minutes, that's fine. Site plans in here, since we have two different data.
The site plan that you should be referencing is the site plan that's actually in this packet. So there's two packets attached. So the first site plan that is in your packet is the current site plan. The other site plan is referenced from the April thirteenth hearing, we just provided that information for history. Address. Data. Thank you.
Question for staff. Oh, come on, there. All right, hearing all about some questions.
Mr. Chair, make a recommendation that we approve as Plan twenty twenty-three dash zero 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 five. With staff comments.
Question approved, staff comments can be seconded.
Second.
Question seconded, favor six, five, say another. Any other say another? So question approved.
Okay, the next case is a zoning, this is case number nine, CMA dash twenty twenty-three dash zero zero one zero fifteen oh seven on the street. Requested recommendation to reset the property from residential single-family median one district R S F two to residential mixed district R. And I'll just go ahead and read through a couple of the staff comments. So the land use classification for this property, we can see in the, it's in the planning or a residential area, is our residential small one, UCR one. And as mentioned, the request is to go from R S F two to R. Subject of the property is located in the study area of the master plan, which is in Columbia, in most of the, closer three. And the proposed college management set forward by the plan, the college management plan recommends land use of identity residential home single-family detachments for the subject property. So the staff recommendation says, while there are other parcels in the area, the proposed rezoning is on the line, is clearly defined as R S F two between North Main, Rick, London and the corner. Staff typically does not recommend rezoning single families and properties to a more dense residential mixed district, particularly when there is a clearly defined boundary that would be eroded as a result, or when it isn't, gives us a step with the future land use for the area. Staff finds that the proposed zoning is in system with the future land use classification and will be encompassed in Vision twenty thirty-six and with the adopted area plan, and therefore recommends to my request. And I'm going to leave now and end this here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Yes, sir, yes, sir, please proceed.
All right, I have the, I'm the Brian Jenkins. Who I run at, I, I don't know, the street is a mix and I was a senior, I just wanted to see if I could maybe jump a zone in to mix and maybe put some more time in. If I could add new plans here, because I was just trying to see if I could get a rezonance. So it's pretty much.
Most of it, thank you. Any questions? Sure. For now. Been familiar conversations with the neighborhoods.
I reached out to, I sent an email to the association, Neighborhood Association, I said, to, to the city council in this area, and that's, that's pretty much kind of. Sorry.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone here from, speak for, against this case? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Carol Mitchell, and I live at fifteen oh three Mount Vernon Street, next to Miss Bacon. That will come to my running part. Direction of Mount Vernon, that I run in, it may, this goes, that's at the top of the hill. That intersection at that point is very dangerous. We pay racks on anything now because people run sports vans, it's that, that's the slant that come. Well, there is, I can see, uh, have something there, you've got to build a bridge. Yes, and we, children because of school, we're at the top of the hill, there's no sign, there's no thing. So I feel that building something that take away every other sort of neighborhood, a residential neighborhood, now single family, you can type in. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here, speak for, against this case?
Good afternoon, my name is Joyce Jenkins, and I live at fourteen eleven Vernon Street since nineteen seventy-one. I have seen this community change. We don't, we live housing, but we don't need all this multiple of housing. That yard is not as big as my backyard. I'm talking about not like the front yard, it's not as big as my backyard. And like Ms. Mitchell said, we have had leaks, but we're people, this old street pocket is for the houses on the other side of the street. We already have multiple apartments on that road. They're tearing down the ladder manor, and the ladder manor really looks like a penthouse to these apartments that's around on that road. And I wonder why they tear those down, what they think you'd be looking at is going around. And I mean, when you look at it, it doesn't make sense. It's, I'm posing to this multiple of family building these other things that they built around that one, they built those since I have been in the area, and I saw that around there deteriorating. So I just want you to know that I'm, but I am for fair housing, but let's keep it a single family, the house in front of me, the people had been there since I'd been there last, and they passed away, and they made their house into an Airbnb. But I was in close to that. And it sometimes has its faults, but I was in close to it. I felt pretty cool about it when I saw it. The people fixed it up, it came in and everything it did, I go about the community, but I just I was multiple stuff, we really need to go, we just need single family housing, and especially because this is our street pocket, and these people, okay, it's simple, I'm in the street. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Is there anyone else here, speak for, against this project? Yes, ma'am.
I'm very too happy to also with Columbia Council Neighborhoods. So for a citywide concern with development, whether it's their project or anything from I twenty-eight Clemson Road East in the Gilz Creek Watershed, if you read Gilz Creek Watershed, if you read the Gilz Creek Watershed twenty twenty, one of the things it specifically mentions is that the city of Columbia, Richland County, Forest Acres, Arcadia Lakes are not communication with development. We have the largest storage system in the state of South Carolina in Gilz Creek Watershed. All that work done post twenty fifteen flood stops at Tommy's College. So that last Lego that has ever been cleaned up, has ever been improved, and it doesn't flow correctly. So every bit of development improved is significantly impacting this watershed, and we don't know the true impact. So it may start here on their area of town, but it is moving through all our areas, and it is going to negatively impact this city as a whole. Look into Lori County, what they did, they had to devalue the properties and pay out property ownership for loss of value due to their overdevelopment. They are working with Coastal Carolina to attempt to recover their ecosystem that they damaged from overdevelopment. And all the properties they put in flood zone, I say this because it's going to impact our city negatively because we don't communicate, and we have no idea what's being developed next door. We have to look at the big picture while we are trying to navigate housing shortages, but you can't devastate and put holes in flood zones for the sake of a shortage. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here, speak for, against this case? Period. Questions, is there any coaches, staff? Any questions for you?
Mr. Chair, I'm posting for staff as it relates to, speaking of parking comment that we investigated in the management structure. At this point, there isn't really a specific proposal, so it's really just the rezoning that we're looking at, you know, of a site plan, that would be something that we'd have to look at if a site plan was proposed, particularly if it included, you know, the neighborhood. So there are perky requirements for, um, single family and other residential development that would have to be on the property. So it just would be sort of an overspill situation if, if people had guests or additional persons, there's, you know, good boys on the street, but that's all we really have to go with at this point. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have one, this is for our, 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 just a little bit.
Four two acres, point four two acres.
Yeah, sure. That's all my question, thank you.
Less than half an acre, point four two acres, four to the application. Any, any other questions for four? Is that a question? Here, is that a question?
Mr. Chair, my request, uh, CMA two two three S zero zero ten, uh, we denied.
Got a motion to. Second.
Second.
Got a motion, second. Favor six, five, say another.
Aye.
Motion to.
So that's all the cases we have this evening. I did want to do just a little bit of housekeeping. If y'all don't mind, right when we finish, if we can get a picture for Andy, which we're putting together.
Sure.
Appreciate it. And also, we have some appointments, updates. Mr. Sanford Dakens has been appointed to the Planning Commission, he is here, he's seated, um, June, in July. And we would like to thank Mr. Temper for his service in the Planning Commission. And we really appreciate you being here and your time. We did have another employee that was going to replace Mr. Frost, but he's not able to serve, so going to wait on appointments, and we appreciate you agreeing to stay on this chair until that time happens. So those are the updates, and that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Temper, for your service, appreciate you.
For the planning commission, if there are, if there are any, so, any other questions?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn for today.
Got a motion, got a second. Got a motion, second, favor six, five, say another.
Aye.
Yeah, I have a motion for adjournment.